Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, out in our fair city. And we were, as we were talking here at the beginning of our meeting here of August 27th, 2018, at council chambers in Weyburn, as I was talking to a couple of the council members, the question has arisen, where did our summer go? We are end of the last council meeting of the summer, and it just seemed to fly by so wonderfully. So tonight, we're going to start off with approval of the minutes of regular council meeting here. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship. I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. All in favor? Carried. Should be noted that Mr. Wheeler is absent here. He is under the weather tonight, so we are a council of six tonight. Are there any additions to the agenda at council? Mr. Warren?
None from administration or worship.
With that, moving ahead, there's no public hearings, no delegations, proclamations, or petitions, no reports of the standing committees. We have the consent agenda, cash activity report. Go ahead.
Sorry, your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the cash activity report for June 2018 be approved as presented.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Motions, accounts payable.
Two for two, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that the purchases in the amount of $902,305.91 from August 10th to 23rd, 2018 be passed for payment.
Second?
I'll second that motion also, your worship.
Discussion. Called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Our diversion lagoon pump recommendation of purchase. Natter, if you would, please.
The city of Weyburn has retained MBE Engineering for doing lagoon, like a diversion lagoon pump assessment for replacing the failed pump at the diversion lagoon. MBE has requested, has done the design and their due diligence. They received two price quotes for the, from the following pump vendors, Xylem Water Solutions and T D H Fluid Systems. After review of key difference noted by MBE Engineering, and based on the significant cost difference in the bomb, MBE is recommending to proceed with Selsa pump supplied by T D H Fluid System at a cost, at a total cost of $24,690.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship. I make a motion that the bid of T D H Fluid Systems, Inc., for the supply of a Selsa submersible pump for the lagoon transfer pump station in the amount of $24,690, not excluding, or not including, sorry, GST and PST be accepted.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Called a question. No discussion on this, so called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. The landfill upgrade, Natter again, please.
In 2018, the city of Weyburn has an allocated budget of $1,740,000 for upgrades to the landfill. The scope of work includes construction of, like, new site access gate, construction scale foundation, oil recycling building foundation, precast tube a blocks, prefabricated scale building, et cetera. On July 27th, 2018, the 2018 landfill upgrade request for proposal was posted to Sask Tenders and the city website, and we received one proposal with pricing. The proposal is summarized as below, Torrent Energy Service, Inc., out of Weyburn, at a bid price of $1,216,340.28. The engineering department would like to commence and like, you know, to award this, recommend awarding this to Torrent Energy Service, Inc., out of Weyburn, at this price.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship. I'll, I'll make a motion that the bid of Torrent Energy Services of Weyburn to perform the 2018 landfill upgrades in the amount of $1,216,340.26 be accepted as presented.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Mr. Van Betje?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I'd just like to make the comment that a few years ago, we did the landfill study, and this will be the first major project as a result of that study, and it'll be the most visible, I think, change to the landfill, and a very positive change to the public. It'll change the entrance and the driveway to the landfill, and no longer will the residents have access right into the landfill. There'll be a very nice, clean unloading area with the Zed walls for the different products. I think it's a, it's a very great improvement, and one that'll improve the use of the landfill and the ability to operate it properly.
Richard.
Thanks, your worship. To the director of engineering, just a question, I know you're going to be expecting this question, we only got one bid on this tender, and that seems to be happening more and more often when, when we do these, so my question to you is, are you comfortable with, with everything, with, with that price range? Does all that makes, makes sense to you? I don't know how else to ask that question, but nothing in there seems out of line because you have nothing to compare it to.
Actually, there is a comparison, like, you know, associated engineering, that's the design for the landfill, their estimated cost is, like, you know, the price which is coming from Torrent Energy is 4% lower than the estimated cost from associated engineering, so we have a comparison to it, as well as it is 20% compared to the leftover from the budget, because 1.1 million 740,000 dollars, it includes the design fees for associated engineering, so we already 20% below budget on this item, and 4% below what was estimated by associated engineering for the construction activities for 2018.
Thank you.
Very good. Any more discussion? If not, called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Our project manager for the vehicle storage building, Mr. Warren, will you discuss this with us?
Yeah, thank you, worship. So, our facility advisory committee has put a recommendation forth that we build a new vehicle storage building at the public works department. Our current roundhouse facility is, is quite an old facility, we're starting to have some, some issues with that facility, so they've put that into place for us, and in budget in 2018, we actually put in $20,000 in for some pre-design work towards a new facility. So, I'll just go through some stuff we're looking at for our project manager. So, the one thing is, for the facility itself, the current facility owns, holds about 40 vehicles, and we're looking at building a facility that has capacity for 50-plus vehicles for future growth, for future stuff as we move forward. We've had our facility manager, Greg Button, get ahold of Midgard Consulting out of White City to look at doing project management for this project. Kirsten Fowler, who's actually the project lead over there, is actually doing project management currently for us for the proposed Weyburn Recreation and Cultural Center. We think by having him added to provide project management for a new facility, it'll do some cost savings for us, because he's already here doing project management for another project that we're working on right now with them. We have a great relationship with them as a, as a project firm, and we're quite confident in the product they've been providing to us thus far through that. So, we asked Kirsten for a quotation for this, he, he provided some background to us on what the cost would be, not for this stage, but for all stages of the project, and some additional things we'll have to look at for other consultant work throughout the process. So, one, he talked about stage one, which is, is concept development, so the engineering pre-design, which will be happening in our budget this year, so for $20,000. So, do a project charter for us, do a documentation of details on how the project will be executed, and then start doing procuring for engineering, design services, and concept development moving forward, and then progress reports on top of that. Stage two would be our schematic to completion of construction and turnover, so that'd be budget of 2019 and 2020. So, the procuring of the engineering design team using a public RFP, doing commissioning team, which would be an invitational RFP, procuring geotechnical engineering services, which would also be invitational, and then procuring the general contractor using a value-based tendering process. Also with that, you'd be chairing meetings, providing monthly reports, and then doing a review consultation with contractor monthly reports, and then close our report. So, proposed for this project would be us doing pre-design starting here in 2018, starting to do design, geotechnical, and site work, and to have it all done up to September of 2019, and then for us to start the project in 2019, with us being completion of, of June of 2020, and then doing commissioning work and being operational by September of 2020. When I talked about other parts of the project and our costs would maybe associate on top of what I'm presenting tonight, will be building construction, site work, demolition, and we have to do a evaluation if we wanted to demolish the old roundhouse facility, design, geotechnical, and third-party commissioning. So, the recommendation that we're pointing forth to use that we offer a fixed fee cost from Midgard with, out of White City, to provide project management services for a new roundhouse, or, sorry, a new vehicle storage facility for $119,990 plus GST.
Your worship, I'll move that, the bid of Midgard from White City, Saskatchewan, to provide project management services for the vehicle storage building to be constructed at the city works yard in the amount of $119,999 plus GST be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship. Discussion?
Thanks, your worship. Just one quick question, city manager, this, the fees associated with this fall within the budget that was assigned to this project.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
So, the initial fees that we put forth was $20,000 for the pre-design, so what we'll have to do is that we'll have to have additional put towards budget for 2019 and 2020.
Okay, thanks.
And when you consider that you have different projects headed up in the oil field at a rate of, the consultants are charging anywhere from $1,000 to $1,500 a day, your $119,000 for the length of the project is, is quite a reasonable fee for this.
So, what would happen is, is Midgard would start with us as soon as possible, as soon as we approve the wording of the contract all the way till completion of the project. So, if completion's not until the end of 2020, it would be all the way till then.
So, this is a fixed fee? There's no, there's no hidden cost plus, cost plus?
Nope, it's all fixed within there.
That's all in there?
Yep.
Called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. We then move into the introduction of bylaws. Amanda, please. We are now talking about amending the zoning for the retail cannabis store.
Further to the first reading of bylaw 2018-3383, there were two changes made to the zoning amendment bylaw for cannabis. They were prior to public notice, so they were advertised. The changes are in 7.3.4 Cannabis Retail Store Development Regulations, number one. All completed applications shall include the current approved cannabis retail store permit as issued by Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority, which we have talked to SLGA, and those permits will not be issued at the time they come to get application for development permit. So, we will be collecting a copy of those when they get a business license to operate. The second change was number seven, off-site storage for products related to cannabis retail stores would be prohibited. Off-site storage is permitted, however, the site must be separately approved by SLGA, so we took that one out as well. I have not had any negative concerns or feedback as a result of the public advertisement, so I recommend council give bylaw 2018-3383, second, third, and final readings.
Mr. Justice? Your worship, I'll move that, bylaw 2018-3383 to amend city zoning bylaw 2003-2099 for the purpose of incorporating minimum standards and regulations for the future development of cannabis retail stores in the city of Weyburn be read a second time.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Thank you, your worship. Amanda, if, if the federal or provincial government changed something that we see right now, what we're complying to, then we have an opportunity to readdress this, correct?
Absolutely, yeah, because we need to follow the, or the provincial regulations. So, if something changes affects our change, we would definitely go back and change it.
So, what we're going with here is the rules have been set forth today.
Right.
Probably going to change down the road somewhat, so.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Justice? Your worship, I'll move that, bylaw 2018-3383 to amend city zoning bylaw 2003-2099 for the purpose of incorporating minimum standards and regulations for the future development of cannabis retail stores in the city of Weyburn be read a third time and passed.
We have, we have to do a second reading. We have to vote on this. Exactly, yeah. Oh, sorry. I thought you were doing the second. Alzheimer's coming in here. Anyway, call it, call the motion on the second reading.
I second it, yep.
Okay. Start again?
So, I do, I need to read it again?
Third reading?
Okay. I'll move that to bylaw 2018-3383 to amend city zoning bylaw 2003-2099 for the purpose of incorporating minimum standards and regulations for the future development of cannabis retail stores in the city of Weyburn be read a third time and passed.
I will second that.
Called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Final reading? That's it? And so, it is thus passed. Very good. Moving on to the next one, amending zoning 1530 First Avenue. Our first reading of it.
We have received a request to rezone the most southerly 42.98 meters by 93.88 meters of 1530 First Avenue from Highway Commercial to Medium Industrial from Justin Iverson of DSI Contracting. Current zoning of this site is Highway Commercial, as it is part of a larger site which fronts onto First Avenue Northeast. The applicant is in the process of completing the subdivision, which will create one acre-sized lot at the south end of this parcel, which borders Medium Industrial sites. DSI Contracting is in the process of developing a new contractor shop and yard for a new leaseholder. Contractor shops and yards are permitted in Medium Industrial, however, they are discretionary in Highway Commercial. After subdivision of the property has been completed, the site does not require Highway Commercial designation, as the zone is designed for traveling public with high level of accessibility from the highway and located adjacent to the highways. Rezoning the site to Medium Industrial fits with the south properties, which are Medium Industrial. As per the official community plan, the site is located in Riverside Park subdivision, which encompasses a variety of land uses between light industrial and heavy commercial, or Highway Commercial. Many lots in the subdivision are not serviced and may appear rundown due to vacant land. Public advertising and notice. As per the Plan Development Act 2007, any proposed zoning bylaw amendment must be publicly advertised in the local paper. The required notice shall be advertised for two consecutive weeks, with the first ad appearing four clear weeks before public hearing. Public advertisement in the local paper will occur on September 5th and 12th with public hearing and final reading to be held on council on October 8th, 2018. Sorry, Tuesday, October 9th. Staff recommends that council give first reading to the zoning bylaw amendment and direct staff to proceed, proceed with public advertisement.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd be pleased to make the motion that bylaw 2018-3385 to amend zoning bylaw 2003 to 2099 for the purpose of rezoning the most southerly 42.98 meters by 93.88 meters of Lot B, Plan 71R18860 from HC, which is Highway Commercial to MI Medium Industrial, be given first reading, and further, that a public hearing be advertised for this bylaw to be held on Tuesday, October 9th, 2018.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Again, we moved it to October 9th, because October 8th is the holiday for Thanksgiving. So, with that, called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Our next lane, road lane closure, the first reading only, Amanda, please.
We have received a request from Minor's Leisure World for the closure and sale of an undeveloped street as well as two lanes. The request is part of the proposal to purchase the lands as well as Lot 45, 47, 48, Block 2, Plan 99SE38080, in order to expand their business. This area is located in the South Hill Mixed Use Subdivision, which represents a mix of residential, commercial, retail, light industrial, and recreational open space. As per the city's act in the public notice policy, notices will be posted in the September 5th and September 12th issues of the Weyburn Review, as well as on the city webpage and city, and posted at City Hall. Neighborhood notices will also be circulated to any landlords within 75-meter radius of the street and lanes. Staff recommends that this portion of 8th Avenue, as well as the two lanes that are undeveloped, and have no purpose for roadway or lanes, as it does not provide any street access or exit to the property adjacent to the road. Council give first reading and advise staff to proceed with public notice and public hearing to be held on September 24th.
I have that motion, you also worship, so I'd like to move that bylaw 2018-3386 for the purpose of closure and sale of an undeveloped development portion of 8th Avenue Southeast, as well as closure of two lanes be read first time, and public notice be advertised and brought back for final consideration at the September 24th, 2018 regular council meeting.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Discussion? Called a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Our third and final amending zoning, Amanda, if you would, please.
In conjunction with road closure. We have received a request to rezone lots 45, 47, 48, Block 2, Plan 99SE38080 from UH Urban Holding to HC Highway Commercial from Minor's Leisure World. The rezoning is in conjunction with their offer to purchase the land. Current zoning for the site is Urban Holding, which is designed to protect the lands required for future development and provide an orderly transition of agricultural land to other uses, as well as to ensure future development is compatible with the local land uses and policies. As per the official community plan, this site is located in the South Hill Mixed Neighborhood, which represents a mix of residential, commercial, retail, and light industrial and recreational land uses. If successfully rezoned to Highway Commercial, the proposed use of the land, recreational, vehicle sales, service, and repair, or rental would be a permitted use and fits in with the neighboring property land uses. As per the Plan Development Act 2007, any proposed zoning bylaw amendment must be publicly advertised in local paper. The required notice shall be advertised for two consecutive weeks, with the first ad appearing four clear weeks before public hearing. Public advertisement in the local paper will occur on September 5th and 12th with public hearing and final reading to be held in council on October 9th, 2018. As well, neighborhood notices to all property owners within 75-meter radius of the site will be circulated on September 5th and displayed at City Hall. Staff recommends that council give first reading to the zoning bylaw amendment and direct staff to proceed with public advertisement and hearing for October 9th.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2018-3387 to amend zoning bylaw 2003-2099 for the purpose of rezoning lots 45, 47, 48, Block 2, Plan 99, Southeast 38080, from Urban Holdings to Highway Commercial, be given first reading, and further, that public hearing be advertised for this bylaw to be held on Tuesday, October 9th, 2018.
I'll second that, your worship. Any discussion? Mr. Richards?
No questions, just, I would like to comment, this is great news, that we've got a local business continuing to grow and do good things, so I just wanted to say this is, love to see this.
Very good. Any other further discussion? Good. So, with that, called a question, all in favor? So, carried unanimously. There's no unfinished business, we have new business, home occupation, Amanda, please.
An application has been received from Jamie Wiseman to operate an automobile, automobile cleaning and detailing business from the detached garage at 318 Lorraine Street. The business will operate between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. from Sunday through Saturday, by appointment only, with minimal anticipated increase to traffic flow. Home-based occupations are permitted in the R2 Zone, generally deemed controversial, requiring public notification and council review. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on August 3rd to all neighbors within 75-meter radius of the home. Residents receiving the notice were given until Monday, August 20th, to voice any concern. No concerns or objections were received. The home occupation is compliant with most, most regulations as set out in zoning bylaw, however, the applicant is not the owner or resident of the dwelling. As per section 6.3.3.4 of the zoning bylaw, no person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in any home occupation as an employee or volunteer. Therefore, staff recommends the home occupation for automobile cleaning and detailing business at 318 Lorraine Street be refused for non-compliance with section 6.3.3.4 of zoning bylaw 2003-2099.
Your worship, I can make a motion that council accept the recommendation of building official Kaufman to refuse the home occupation application from Jamie Wiseman for an automobile cleaning detailing business at 318 Lorraine Street for the following reason. The applicant is not the owner or resident of the location for the home occupation and is in non-compliance with section 6.3.3.4 of the zoning bylaw 2003-2099.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Mr. Wiseman, do you wish to speak to it? Do you wish to speak to this?
I'm just here to see how this is.
Oh, no. I guess the question, if you would, please, I just have the one question. If you would, come up to the podium.
Sorry, it's all living in.
Yes, sir. I guess the question is that, as to what I want to know is how, that you're not the resident, and as I just say, is, you have, our bylaw states that you have to be the resident or the renter of this, and why did you choose this as opposed to your own house, wherever you're living?
Your worship, this, I don't have a garage of my own, and it's my brother's garage, and he's going to, he's not going to charge me anything to help me get on my feet.
So, okay, this is your brother's garage?
It's my brother's garage.
Onto that, so, okay, thank you. Appreciate that, yeah.
Thanks.
Mr. Richards, any comment?
No.
Again, the bylaw clearly states that you have to, you have to be, for home occupations, they have to be your own, the resident, or the renter, right?
Right.
And, Mr. Justice?
Has there ever been? Has there ever been any exemptions in the past on that situation?
Uh, no.
Has this came up before?
No, we haven't had a request before from somebody who wasn't the owner or resident.
I'm going to guess the reasoning is so you have, so that we have a certain amount of control over what is going on there, and without the proponent being the owner of the land and the house, it would be tough to enforce any infractions, would that be the?
Right, we would still enforce anything under the owner.
Right. Yeah, if, I'm familiar with the property, and the gentleman owns that property, used to be a contractor in town, he's working in, in the construction business now, but working for someone else, so I know as far as traffic goes, there was a lot more going on in that yard site and, and that garage when the owner was working his own construction company, and I don't think Jamie's going to bring anywhere close to the amount of traffic going in and out, and is what previous was there, so I don't think the traffic issue is a concern whatsoever. Could we not have some kind of arrangement that, with the owner, if it becomes an issue, it goes to the owner that has relayed? I mean, they are brothers, I mean, just hate to see something turn away here.
Did that?
Your worship, it is in the bylaw, and it does say you cannot approve something, a home occupation where they don't live there, so this is a bylaw, so I would caution council that this is a bylaw, and unless we amend the bylaw, we, council is forced to follow the bylaw, unless you wish to amend the bylaw. the bylaw, we council is forced to follow the bylaw unless you wish to amend the bylaw.
But, and there is nothing in the bylaw that states for exemptions?
Not for this item, no. Not for this type of home occupation.
Okay. So there's no exemptions allowed?
Not under the zoning bylaw.
Not under the city bylaw, there's no way?
No.
Being exemption to, granted exemption, or council's discretion? No?
Not in the zoning bylaw, no.
The zoning bylaw? Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. If I could ask a question. Amanda, the difference is that they don't have to own the property.
Right.
They have to live there.
Right.
What if they owned the property but didn't live there?
If they weren't a resident there, we would be in the same position, right?
Okay, thank you.
What if he rented the property?
If you were a renter of the property and didn't own it, we do require you to get the owner's written permission. He does have the permission written from the owners of the property, however, the fact remains he doesn't own it or reside there.
So could we set this aside and he could go back and see if he can arrange a rental agreement with his brother?
They have to live there.
He has to live there? Okay.
Just one more question. Amanda, sorry, we're running this one on you pretty hard here, but if, sorry, Jamie, I don't know your brother's name, but if the owner of the property got the business license, oh, sorry, if the owner of the property applied for a license to operate a detailing business in his own garage, that would be acceptable?
Right.
And what if he employed Mr. Wiseman to do that work for him?
Under the zoning bylaw for home occupations, you are not allowed to have any employees.
Right.
I read that one, too.
I think the reason that it's so restricted is because it doesn't want to take away from any commercial business downtown.
Totally understand that, and I totally get why we wouldn't want to have, because if somebody had a number of homes in town, you know, a landlord, maybe that had a half a dozen homes, we don't want them renting all of those garages out.
Absolutely.
For different businesses. I fully understand this, I'm just trying to, this is not one of those situations.
Right.
And I'd like to see us be able to help Mr. Wiseman out, but it sounds like maybe we're going to have to go back to the drawing board a little bit on this one.
So I, what I hear, Danette, is that we don't have a choice on this recommendation, on this by, on this.
Not really, unless you wish to go against legislation and your own bylaw.
That wouldn't be a good practice to start, sorry.
Any further discussion? Read, if you could read the, the motion again, please.
Yep. That council accept the recommendation of building official Kaufman to refuse the home occupation application from Jamie Wiseman for an automobile cleaning detailing business at 318 Lorraine Street for the following reason. The applicant is not the owner or a resident of the location for the home occupation and is in noncompliance with Section 6.3.3.4 of the zoning bylaw 2003-2099.
Call a question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. And again, unfortunately, because you're not neither a renter nor the resident of it, that is why the home occupation is denied, and there's nothing in our bylaw to give us an exemption, to create an exemption for that. With that, inquiries and announcements? Do you have any inquiries, announcements? Not a?
Well, mine not an inquiry, just I wanted to send a big shout out to the folks at Weyburn Minor Football for putting on that pretty awesome event on Saturday for us. Our city manager was a football champion, turns out. He's paying for it today, though, and that's okay, but a great event over there, so a big, a big congratulations to them.
Natter?
The Engineering Department would like to thank Counselor Mickel and Mr. Pat Maloney for doing the survey for the sight line for the streets and keep going, you're giving us extra work, so that's good, thanks.
Paige, would you like to make the announcement about Friday, please?
Oh, well, I wasn't prepared.
But, on the spur of the moment, for Friday, this Friday?
Um, this Friday, well, actually, on September 1st is Weyburn's 105th birthday, so on Friday, the Weyburn Leisure Center is going to be hosting a free swim, which they've been doing all summer, from my understanding, and, but anyways, they're going to be open from 1:15 to 5:00 p.m. for a free swim, and then from noon to 1:00 on Friday, the 31st, we're going to be having some free cake for people to come stop by, just from noon to 1:00 outside City Hall, weather pending, from my understanding, it could rain that day, so if it does rain, I don't think any of us really want to be outside, so, but.
No hot dogs?
No, just cake. We'd really like to encourage people to go swimming, if possible, unless you want a barbecue, you're more than welcome.
If you bar, if you bar, if you barbecue, bring the barbecue, I'll buy the hot.
So, yeah, if you guys want to, if you guys want to bring your own barbecue and your own hot dogs, feel free to do so, but, yeah. Yeah, we'd like to really encourage people to go swimming if possible, because I know school starts right away and the pool's putting a good effort into having a free swim for everyone, so that's it.
And this is Friday, November, I mean, August 31st, November, August 31st, in front of Weyburn City Hall, noon to 1:00. Any other announcements there? It's been very, very busy through the summer, and the summer's disappeared, most certainly.
Your worship, I have one question.
Sure.
Engineering, Natter, can you give us an update on Government Road, what's happening, what's not happening, and when that road will be officially open?
The water main replacement for Government Road is about to be completed, like, you know, we are doing, like, you know, since last week, some pressure testing, like, you know, we'll update the council once it is completed. For the bathing, the asphalt bathing, we'll be doing some batching, like, you know, this year, like, you know, we'll do some building, construction for the base and sub-base for this year. It will be following the contractor, like, the water main contractor leaving the city. Then after this, we will batch this water mains, the main trench for this winter, leave it to settle, and we will be doing the final milling and bathing for this stretch from Government Road early next, next year, so it will be early next spring, sorry, so it will be May, somewhere in May next year, the milling and bathing.
So the actual, the actual plan was to have it done all this year, and sometimes things happen, I understand that, but when can we actually, the reason why I'm asking this, your worship, and Natter, is that school opens September 4th, and that's a very thorough bus route, Government Road, so is, will it be open September 4th or the week after?
I think, like, you know, we'll postpone the opening, most likely it will be around, like, you know, the mid, like, September 15th, the week for September 15th. The reason for this, to give the subcontractor for ASL bathing the time for doing the base and sub-base for this stretch while it is closed, rather than extending the lifespan for constructing the base and live base for three weeks or four weeks and leaving it without bathing for this winter. So it's better for us to do the sub-base and base in one week than do the batching for the asphalt batching, then open it for the public.
Thank you, Natter.
With that, I'll ask you again, Natter, about the update for our lights downtown.
Lights downtown, like, the poles was, like, delayed from the manufacturer due to unfavorable event, so it was scheduled for today, where it is coming, like, you know, to the city. For this week, Industrial Electric will be doing the wiring in their, in their yard. Hopefully, by next week, we will start setting those poles on the downtown. There will be a partial closure for the streets by then, like, you know, during setting those poles up. So next week, there will be, like, you know, see some activities on the streets for this one.
Very good. Any other queries about stuff going in the city? No, everything seems to be going good that way. We appreciate you, Mr. Warren, and all the city staff, and you, Natter, for all the hard work that you and your staff are doing within the city, that goes out from myself and from council. There's no notice of motions, no requests for clarification, no committees of the hall, and with that, that brings an interim meeting, and we call it adjournment. Thank you.